All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a special St. Patrick's Twallon City Council work session with our CIO representatives. Welcome, everyone. And at this point, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Kathy Holland, who is presenting your PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you. Megan's going to run the PowerPoint.
All right.
So we'll let her get it up. And I want to thank, all of us want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and all the city councilors for agreeing to meet with us. We very much appreciate you making time. We know your time is limited and you're very busy. We've attempted to condense the issues down to some brief points. And we're hoping at the end of this meeting that we will have follow up where we can get into more of the details. Next slide. This is an agenda overview. I'm going to take the opportunity to provide the council an update on our activities since Megan George's report about six months ago. As you might recall, due to COVID and other matters, things have gotten pretty quiet with the CIOs, although some activities were going on. It was a lot less activity than in the past. And then I'm also going to talk a little bit about the previous tough assignments that the CIOs have taken on. We're not afraid to take on something tough. We've asked Patricia Parsons to just give a one to two minute update on some work she's done on noise reduction. That's one of the issues we're talking about tonight. And in the spirit of good news, Janine Wilson will give you an update on a community fair that they're planning at River Park. Then I'll go over the three categories of items where we need city council support in order to affect or to take care of the problems that we've identified and to affect change. Then there'll be an opportunity, Mr. Mayor, will turn the meeting over to you and for city council comments. Before I do that, I'll ask our CIO representatives if they have anything to add because I have cut down the material quite a bit. So it's possible that say at some point that I didn't make, someone will want to make. And then we hope we will come up with the next step. So next slide. We do have a history of tackling tough problems. For the newer city councilors, you may not be aware that River Park worked with the DEQ and the city, the DEQ enforcement and Grims Fuel to establish a good neighbor agreement for odor monitoring. This was a project that took close to seven to eight years. And they formed an expert opinion on DEQ. And at a drop of the hat, you can meet with them and you will learn everything there is to know about what DEQ can do and not do. And we've ended up in a very good place. The commercial CIO worked with the city to rewrite zoning for two of our commercial blocks, which solved a lot of problems, both for the city and for the owners. All of our CIOs have been supporting an emergency preparedness education and CERT, which is a challenge, especially during COVID. And then the ECIO leadership helped with the neighbors when Legacy was trying to do a development plan several. The first plan was thrown out and the second plan was accepted. So improved communication was in place. It was a team effort. Lots of people being involved. Next slide. The commercial CIO, the then president got involved because downtown smelled like burnt horses. Because the crematorium in downtown Tuolaton wasn't running its equipment. We learned that the city didn't have enforcement and we learned that DEQ did. And we helped the owner learn to run their equipment more efficiently. And as far as I know, the smell of burning horse flesh is gone now. Almost all of our CIOs have used grant funding for some project or another, including dog waste control, park benches, neighborhood night out and community events. And then nearly every CIO at one time or another has commented either through their land use officer or their president on proposed building projects and development projects. Next slide. Well, we've launched our new website. We didn't have it when we talked to you and I hope you have a chance to go look at it. Next slide. We've coming out of COVID and of course, we're watching very carefully these new variants. We hope we're out of COVID restrictions. Two, the CIOs have been able to have virtual annual meetings. Multiple CIOs have continued to make public comment at planning commission hearings. Five, I have planned a virtual or in-person annual meeting before the end of June. And five of them have full or nearly full boards to have plans to fill their boards at their annual meeting. Next slide. All seven are looking at grant requests. Not all of them will be making a grant request to the city, but many of them will. And then our CERT program is still going strong and we're doing Zoom preparation presentations every month. Now that the city has removed the mask restrictions and the meeting rooms are now available, we hope we will be able to meet in person. And that leads me to the next one, which we're, I've asked Patricia Parsons to give a bit of an update, a minute or two on her work on noise pollution.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. I very much appreciate the opportunity, everybody, to speak to you tonight. I'm going to keep this short, but I do want to offer to reach back out to anyone who has questions after the meeting. So please do feel free to email me or call me if you want any specific details. So we all know that after 124th was completed, the noise pollution has increased, including but not limited to the noise of live gunfire from the Tri-County Gun Club. The noise of the gunfire has risen to a level where at times in any given neighborhood, it's unclear if the shooting is at the club or just down the street, which is unacceptable on so many levels, including the health risks which could harm our entire population. But most importantly, our kids and our veterans. I can't imagine a veteran with PTSD living in any one of our neighborhoods where this problem is exacerbated. Another problem with this pollution that many are now starting to realize could be a very big one centers around our property values. Once this real estate market starts to cool, and it will, we may be faced with a challenge in selling should we want to. For starters, the Oregon seller disclosure statement, which all property owners by law have to submit to a buyer, there is a question that may prove to be a sticking point. The question generally asks, and I'm paraphrasing, is there anything about this property that could affect its value that a buyer should be aware of? And the answers are either yes or no, and then one has to elaborate. Several neighbors have contacted me recently looking for ways to fix this problem. And we think that perhaps we have identified maybe hopefully as a potential solution. First, let me say that it's very possible that the owners of the gun club have absolutely no idea how the noise pollution has risen over the past two plus years as 124th has gone in and as more development continues. One of our neighbors who has knowledge of building construction has reached out to companies that offer solutions specifically to outdoor gun ranges on noise mitigation. And at least on the surface, it looks like there may be solutions that are not financially prohibitive. Another neighbor who has firsthand knowledge of firearms has indicated that there are indeed simple solutions that could be put in place to help mitigate the issue. This said, we've asked our mayor to reach out to the county commissioners, which he has done so that we can present our findings to them. We've actually created a full presentation. The hope and the goal is that the county will step up and partner with the gun club. Again, and I want to reiterate this in partnership to put in place these potential solutions. We have another meeting with our mayor next week and hope to firm up details on setting up a time to present to the county commissioners. And once that presentation has been nailed down and we've had the opportunity to present, I'll be happy to reach back out to anyone who has interest and give an update. And with that, I'll end my comments and I'll turn it back to Kathy. Again, please feel free to reach out to me with any questions that I can elaborate on. I am more than happy to reach back out.
Thank you, Patricia. Now, Janine Wilson, we'll go back to the slideshow. Can give us just a short update on the first in-person community fair we're planned since COVID started. So go for it, you, Janine.
You, the River Park Board is now actively working in partnership with the city of Tuolaton on planning a second, our second membership meeting of this fiscal year. Our goal is to reach out to our young families as we continue to appreciate the participation of our older adults and senior citizens members. Our community fair we held Saturday, May 14th from one to three at Jervens Park. The two shelters, packaged snacks and treats and other supplies will be provided using a small portion of our grant. We will host various nonprofit group presentations such as neighbors nourishing communities with plant and seed giveaways, friends of the library with book giveaways. And we plan to invite groups involving art and music. River Park's CERT Incident Command and Communication Center will be set up and residents, they can see the equipment that's been purchased with our past grants. Tuolaton Neighborhood Ready will offer recommendations on how to protect yourself, your family and your neighbors in the event of a major earthquake or other interruptions in services. The city will host a table to address citizen inquiries. In addition to the park's playgrounds, we hope to have activities such as face painting and crafts for kids. And if there are no questions, I'll send this back to Kathy. If there are any further ideas or input, please email it to them to me at riverparkcio@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Janine. Now on to the issues at hand. This is the three categories of concern we wanted to share with the city council where we're coming to you for help. We believe these issues are not solved by current city ordinances. And they're complex. And the summary I'm going to present tonight is going to be brief and I would expect you would have questions. But they are Washington County's development process, traffic and noise and tree loss. Next slide. Washington County unfortunately has a pattern of ignoring public input. There is a case to be made that it is systemic. I found multiple examples where the county has been held. And then this one is, I will admit is my favorite. Cedar Hill News, I love local news, reported that Luba had an enforcement order. Washington County is no longer allowed to do residential development because they have failed to use to protect the citizens and the land use goals to protect the project. This one was on natural resources. We believe that is the situation with the bridge, the extension of Bassalt Creek Parkway. Next. This pattern, I Googled, there's at least six lawsuits floating around and I didn't even really look for them all. What we have found is that this county forgets the public input. That the summary from multiple meetings somehow is not captured accurately. In fact, when they requested design funding, they put down no citizen input and that had to be corrected by the, I think it was the city of Tuolaton stepped up and said, wait a minute, you've you've cut that wrong. We have all kinds of input on this project. And if it wasn't the city of Tuolaton, it was some citizen. Here is the issue of the Parkway Bridge, very simply. If it doesn't, it doesn't help traffic. It hurts traffic in Tuolaton, but more importantly, it doesn't help traffic unless and until Clackamas County agrees to the extension over I-5 into Stafford Hamlet and the connection of I-5 or I-205. It's that simple. It's a bridge to nowhere. It, when those of us who have been around a few years, remember the Markham Bridge used to have an exit up at the top of the bridge that was sealed off. It was a stump that led out to a turnoff that never got put on. That's what's going to happen to this project. If it goes ahead without this commitment from Clackamas County. We, our citizen involvement input is that the city should ask for a delay of building this project until Washington County secures Clackamas County's agreement. According to our read of the Clackamas County Transportation Plan, that project is not in their plan. When we talk to the citizens of Stafford, they tell us it will never happen. So we are heading to a bridge to nowhere, a Markham Bridge stump off. And the only upside is the Parkway is it's being built between the two residential developments that are planned. It could become a paved park space for a play space for kids to play. But it, it won't extend across the I-5. Right now, the current road works. It terminates at Southwest Graham's Ferry and the roads turn right or the trucks turn right and go to the Wilsonville On-ramp. That's where they're going to go. If the bridge is extended to Southwest Boons Ferry, which is already failing, the traffic is failing real time. It will go to Southwest Ferry or Boons Ferry and it shoves that traffic into already filled street during peak travel times. And it ends up at the same I-5 On-ramp. Next slide. The county Parkway environmental report is not consistent with previous metro studies. It dismisses the environmental value of the area. The noise analysis is almost funny if it wasn't so sad. It says it costs too much to buffer the noise on the bridge. This is not a reason to not have sound buffering. Plus, they only use the existing housing. They didn't include what the city has planned, which is a housing development on the street that goes nowhere, which is the Parkway stub. And those homes will be very much affected by the noise on the bridge because the bridge is going over a canyon. Now, many of us commented on the online open house, but there were three critical things missing from that open house. One, it did not show an elevation of the bridge over over the creek. It looked like, and Megan, do you want to just turn the screen over to me? Okay. You've, you've got to, it says you've disabled it. Can you give me the screen?
Yeah, if you try now, you should be okay.
Okay. This is the picture they show you guys. It looks flat. What they're not showing is the elevation over the canyon, which is the whole point of the problem. Okay, that's enough. You can have the screen back. I was able to find an elevation, but it was from 2019. And so I'm not sure that it's consistent. The other thing they didn't give you is the traffic study. Because if they had, the traffic study would show that this bridge does not contribute to any kind of traffic relief at the I-5 On-ramp. Okay, so the noise analysis clearly states it costs too much to do anything about it. And that the housing we want to build is going to be impacted by the truck noise going across that bridge. And it will amplify throughout the neighborhoods because of the tree problem. And we'll get into trees here in a minute. Next slide. The questions we have for the city council on Washington County, can you help us? Because we believe they have ignored citizen involvement. We, is there any way that you can argue that they have argued, that they have ignored citizen involvement? Because your citizen involvement organization is telling you that. And that this bridge to nowhere should not be built until Clackamas County agrees that a Parkway be built through the Stafford area. If you can't get them to agree to that, at least get some noise buffers on this bridge. Because it is going to be noisy. And there are probably other options that I haven't listed here and you may hear from others if we have a follow-up conversation. But I'm here to report to you, citizen involvement. We're all for development. We're all for urban renewal. The people in Tuolaton are pro-development, but we are not in favor of having Southwest Boons Ferry brought to us a stop. And that's where we're heading. Okay, enough. Next slide. I got a little dramatic, forgive me. Traffic. It is our analysis that the traffic studies the city's been using were prepared during COVID. Steve mentioned that they adjusted the studies for COVID. But as COVID is finally being lifted off of our backs, hopefully lifted off, traffic is getting worse. We think the study process needs to be looked at. What we see happening as citizens living in Tuolaton is that the overflow traffic from I-5 is using Southwest Boons Ferry and Southwest 65th as alternative routes due to the congestion on I-5 at the 205 interchange. You guys live in Tuolaton. If you commute on either one of those two roads, I think this ought to ring true for you as well. We believe using the outdated current transportation plan or the understated traffic studies is going to create new problems for your existing neighborhoods. In fact, we already have the problems in several neighborhoods. They can't get out of their neighborhood. And then there's transit. We have not come up with anything that provides additional transit down, especially down Southwest Boons Ferry and Southwest 65th that are for services outside of six o'clock in the morning to nine o'clock in the morning and then three in the afternoon to seven in the evening. Essential workers need more service than those time breaks. And although it won't solve all the problems, it would help, especially with all the apartments and the expanded apartments going in on Southwest Boons Ferry with the new development and also the Tuolaton Heights new development. That we think a lot, attention needs to be paid to helping people who are in apartments be able to not have to park and drive. Because if they have to own a car, we're going to have parking problems and we're going to have congestion problems. And then today, this afternoon, it is dangerous to enter traffic on Southwest Iowa around at the high school because traffic coming down the hill is going too fast and traffic going up the hill is jammed. And that doesn't need any of the new development that's going on, nor the bridge that, and the light that's going in on the Parkway. Next slide. The questions we have for the city council generally, would you consider updating your traffic studies for after COVID? To more accurately determine the impact of increased development. We've read your traffic studies. They're 40, 50 pages, all kinds of engineering analysis. But if they underestimate the number of cars that are currently on the road, then the traffic study is not particularly helpful. We believe it's understating that traffic. And then can we get some kind of committed traffic solution for Southwest Boons Ferry and Southwest 65th? Right now, Rideshare Ride Connection is helping people coming in on the train. That's great. Wonderful. It's nice, but it doesn't help our apartment dwellers get to work. We need some kind of ride connection or something that services those two streets that, in which we have lots of apartments. Next slide. Noise in trees. With the development of Southwest 124th, as Patricia has pointed out, noise, neighborhood noise levels have gone up and it's not just the gun club. According to Planet Earth, among other publications, and I'm sure that we could find a biologist who would agree, trees reduce sound by intercepting sound waves and changing their behavior. The massive development we have already had, plus what is planned is causing sound to go across our city in a way it's never gone before. There are other ways to do it, big tall concrete barriers. But we know that plants, especially tall trees, reduce the noise by absorbing, deflecting, refracting sound waves depending on the tree, especially evergreens. ODOT has a barrier of trees around 30, it's between, I think it's around 30, 40 feet and the engineers know this along the highway and their hedges and they're intended to protect businesses and residents from highway noise. We're getting so much, because we have removed so much vegetation and trees, we're having sound bounce all over the place. The current development standards require a report on the trees. But they don't require the trees be saved or that the development work around the trees. And if they interfere with the building site, they're cut down. Next slide. Here are two of those reports from two projects that have just been improved. And I will compliment the city. You put your reports online. When I try to find this information with the county, it is very difficult. So thank you, city of Tuolaton, for being transparent. This, these both came right off of the analysis reports that were with the application for approval. Autumn sunrise is going to lose onsite trees. They have, they have 3,141 trees that are onsite. Seventy-seven are going to be preserved. And 97% or 3,064 trees are going to be cut down. Now, a portion of those trees were not healthy. But there were many healthy trees that are going to be cut down because they're in the way of the straight streets, the narrow lots, the packed in housing. When we lose trees, we lose sound and also water absorption. Now, looking at the logistics park, which is formerly known as Island Green, the site lost 93% of the trees or 415 trees. That report didn't have the little summary, but it says that 415 trees over eight inches in diameter. That report didn't have the little summary, but it says that four hundred and fifteen trees over eight inches in diameter, diameter need to be cut down. Okay, next slide. Can we look at landscaping plans so that they have sound buffers? Our current plan is kind of a narrow, beautiful landscaping. I mean, small shrubs, lovely trees, but they don't use the big fir trees because fir trees need more space. The beds are narrow to maximize the usable space for the developer. This would require a conversation on how this could be done. But if you look at this map, Island Green, this is the driving range. I don't know, you, you may not be able to see my cursor. There's a big giant drainage issue, which I'm sure the engineers had a lot of trouble trying to figure out. I think they're filling it. We can ask Steve. But you can see how narrow the planting bed is. Now, any one of us have driven by Island Green, we know those big beautiful trees. Those were sound buffers. They're going to be gone. Okay, next slide. Bassal Creek. There is a, besides having different kinds of landscaping requirements, there is a large reclaim area that is not yet part of the city. And they've been dumping dirt in, and you guys, the city will probably know a lot more about it than I do, but it used to be an empty hole and now they're dumping dirt in. Is this an area where we can work with the owner and come up with some kind of barriers? I know they don't want to do anything that keeps them from developing the property, so it would take, and I know it's going to be a number of years before they are ready to develop the property. But right now, it looks like a moonscape. I don't know how many people have driven by it. In addition, we have all of the developable property in the blue area, which could have more trees if we can figure out a way to do it, so it isn't a hardship for the developer. Especially if there's a bridge. Next slide. So our questions to you, can you help us? Would the city consider updating the ordinances for increased evergreen trees, knowing that they're going to need more space as part of the development code? Could you consider updating public right-of-way codes to add more tree barriers? If you go down Southwest Boons Ferry, there's a couple areas where there's a green grass and a, a tree barrier along the side, and it's really lovely. Other areas, there's nothing. So in our planning functions, can we change those plans? And then if Washington County has control over that reclaimed area, can we work with them to figure out some way to plant trees or some other option? Uh, we don't know. We just look at that space and know that if we don't put some trees up, we're going to be not, then looking for concrete barriers. And I'm not sure any of us want that. Next line. So, uh, uh, right now, it's, uh, four minutes after seven. I'd like to ask my CIO partners if they could go into chat, if they have anything they want to add. Cause I dropped out a lot of, there's a lot more detail I, I haven't shared. But I, I hope I've given you an, an overview of the issues. Does anybody want to add something? Just go into chat and Megan can call on you. Or I must have done pretty good.
You also could just do the raise hand function if someone wants to ask.
Okay, did, uh, using the reaction button, do you want to raise your hand? Well, Mr. Mayor, I guess my summary was okay.
Uh, Patricia has her hand up.
Okay.
Oh, thank you. I'll just make this really brief. I would just like to mention that when I first contacted Washington County about noise pollution after one hundred and twenty-fourth had gone through, somebody at the county actually said to me, well, when we put one hundred and twenty-fourth through, we didn't remove very many trees, so I don't know what the problem is. Well, I don't know how many trees they removed when they put one hundred and twenty-fourth through, but it is a massive amount of asphalt. And they moved a massive amount of earth. So we, we're not only talking about tree removal, but earth removal and the insertion of concrete and asphalt. It creates a mechanism for echoing and sound reverberation, so, or noise reverberation. So I don't know, the county's not thinking that they, they have a problem with this. Thanks.
But yeah, I'd like to speak to that. Uh, Sherwood has a big development going on their side where they took away half the hill, which is causing a noise bounce. And there were a lot of trees over there, so Washington County started this. So, we're ready, I guess, anybody else? Okay, Mr. Mayor, it's all yours.
All right. So, uh, I'll start with, uh, I'm going back on your slides here. Uh, Washington County Development and Washington County, the, the bridge specifically. And I'm gonna, uh, call on Counselor Brooks, Pratt, and Sacco. They attended a meeting with Chair Harrington to discuss this particular topic. I've always been very vocal. You remember when we did the renewal zone for Bassal Creek that we're not wild about this bridge, we're reluctantly agreeing to the bridge as a part of the terms for the urban renewal zone. Cause that's the only way Washington County would grant it. I've been very vocal to Chair Harrington and Commissioner Roy Rogers about the lack of support for the bridge and the changes that need to be occurring. I've pounced all over them about the lack of public involvement, and they're getting back to residents of the Twolton with the feedback they get. I agree with you, Kathy, that you tell them stuff and it seems to become invisible over time. Uh, they committed to us that they'd be, uh, a lot more involved and listening to feedback from our community. They also committed to knowing that a lot of fixes would have to occur on Boons Ferry Road, uh, if that bridge was ever built. At this point, this bridge, uh, is nowhere near being built because they don't have the money for it. And they haven't finished the studies for it. And to get the money for it, as every year passes by, the bridge becomes more and more expensive. And they're going to have to ask the feds for money for that, uh, which the feds, you know, may or might not have money to do that. So I just want to put the groundwork there for that and let the, the three commissioners, commissioners, three counselors talk about their discussions, because these three counselors are also not super in favor of the bridge, were reluctantly supporting it as minimally as possible as we can. But they had the interface with Washington County officials, so I'll go with, uh, Counselor Brooks and then Counselor Sacco and Counselor Pratt. You all can coordinate with each other to, uh, discuss your, uh, meeting with the, the county officials.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody that came tonight. I know you'd much rather be playing, watching basketball or celebrating St. Patrick's Day, so I really appreciate your investment in Twolleton and I share your, all these concerns. The first thing I'd like to say is, you know, as a council, we go ahead with what the council decision is, but I voted against adding that bridge to our list of projects. I've been very vocal. I've walked pretty much every new counselor over to the site, so we know what the height looks like, we know what that canyon looks like. We have met the people whose lives and homes will be impacted by that bridge. And I, I have to say, I've probably put as much work onto that as anything since I've started, um, as far as my own time, since I've started, um, my term. My concerns around are shared. I, I'd like a lot of your ideas. I will say when we met with Chair Harrington and Commissioner Rogers and engineers, a lot of the conversation is, this is an agreement that has been had for a number of decades. And I have talked about adaptive management and changing as the congestion on Boons Ferry changes. One thing that's planned is from that area to the freeway, they are saying that they're going to add another lane, like the mayor has talked about with the widening of Twolton Sherwood Road. That took about fifteen years to happen, so I don't know when that is going to provide some relief for the area as it stands now. But I do believe that's part of the considerations with the traffic studies for the development going in there. The noise, particularly when I read that report, I was, um, very disappointed. And you're right, it would be funny if it wasn't so sad. And, um, when we met, I asked specifically, the next time they come to talk to us to, they have a special sound engineer that was gonna talk about the impact of the noise. I, I'm more interested in that than just the flat-out expensive rationale for uh, noise mitigation. And when they said one home would be affected, I just was, you know, it's, it's one of those things where there's, there's a rationale that makes it sound different than the reality. Because we're working in what's there now. And we all know, um, that we need that area to be safe because of the schools. And truck traffic is going to be noisy and dirty and expensive, and people do live there. I want to just springboard on to, because I think some of these issues are related when we're talking about trees and green spaces. One thing, and we've talked, I've talked with the mayor, we have the climate action plan that's just getting rolled out. And when the consultants come and do community engagement, I hope that each and every one of you and will tell as many people as possible to contribute. And I, I know that I'm not the only one that believes that we should be updating our codes to be greener, more modern, and have solutions that are mindful and livable for the people who live here. And and so I do believe some of the climate action plan, I hope will inform the if there's the will of the council to up, update the code, but that's what I hope to see us do. And it is difficult because with the county, they have, what they, I know they wanted to start a climate action plan and they haven't done it with all the work that they've had to do around COVIDs. So, um, anyway, tho- those are some of my thoughts. I, I will say, I, you know, have to go with the will of the council, but my personal perspective as a citizen is really, I'm not for this bridge at all. And, um, and I will do whatever I can and I will vote however I can to support, uh, better solutions for, and, and I will say, one of the good outcomes is that Clean Water Services has agreed to help also improve the canyon. So I think that at least we have partners, and I think they're very good at what they do. So what's happening there and how it's being managed by the county as far as the water goes is, for me, it's not optimal, and I think that Clean Water Services would do a much better job, and if we, so that's one win, I think that we already have under our belts. The other thing that they said is that they would be in more close communication with the city itself, um, our city staff, that is. And so I think that should just be, I think that should be a matter of course, but the fact that they're acknowledging that and saying that they will do that, um, at least that there's an acknowledgement there that we need more communication and a strong communication around this particular issue. And I'm sure there's more, and other counselors will have that, but if you have any questions too, I want to say, I hear the gun club from my house, we've talked in a, and when, um, the mayor wrote that letter, the entire council is behind that. We all agree on that. So I just want you to know that, that, that our council is very united in, um, doing whatever we can do and saying whatever we can say to the county and the owners of the gun club, that it's impacting our community. I don't know if I can go as far as the real estate stuff from a real estate appraising perspective, but I can say that the quality of life and the noise, and I think that with the climate action plan, I would like to look at other things too as well that we can look at for, um, city noise mitigation, including like leaf blowers and things like that. So, um, anyway, I'll stop, unless there's a question for me.
Counselor Pratt and Counselor Sacco or either or, or both?
Um, thank you, everyone, for being here today. Um, I really appreciate all the work, um, that went into this presentation and all the work that you've been doing and the update was great. Thank you. Um, I am, Bridgette did a great job, Counselor Brooks, I did a great job, um, at summarizing our meeting. There was just a couple points that I did want to highlight. Is that, uh, when we, when we, when we met, we went over the history of how this conversation came to be, and just to, to back what the mayor said as far as timeline, when we started, when they brought up the timeline, they started in nineteen eighty. This is, this is how this got started. And so um, it's, it's been a very exhausting, um, process throughout the years, um, from, from what we've learned on the history of this bridge. And so I saw someone put in the chat, how did this come to be? It will take longer than this meeting to, to answer that question. But also to say, when will this bridge actually get built? Who knows? Um, because we are going on forty years already, um, with this conversation. So, um, but with that said, I think you have a, a council here that is not going to let this go. Um, and one of our our, um, huge asks to the county was, we need to have a seat at the table. The bridge isn't in, in Twolleton yet, get. Um, and so it, it technically didn't need our support. Um, however, we, we've asked if it, if this is going through, we want it, we want a, a seat at the table. And, um, I'm going to speak for Counselor Brooks and Counselor Pratt really quick and just say, we're not going to let this go. And you have three of us at least that have already, you know, been, been pushing for that seat at the table and will continue to push. And so we appreciate any of the feedback that you do have, so don't ever hesitate. If you think of something else, please let us know, let me know. And we'll continue to, um, be in their ear about this topic. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to add to, um, I want to, I also, um, even though our council voted for, to support this bridge, I did not vote to do that.
Yeah, I just want to add to, I wanna, I also, even though our council voted for, to support this bridge, I did not vote to do that. I have issues with it from so many different angles, climate, cost, equitability, the traffic, the noise. When we did meet with Commissioner Harrington and Commissioner Rogers. It wasn't long after that report came out where they said it's too costly to put up sound walls. And I have big concerns about that because that bridge, I think, is at a four percent grade and they're, they're hoping to have truck traffic on it. So it's gonna be a lot of noise. We even asked about referencing to your trees and, you know, I asked if, can you put in vegetation or anything? And they, we basically didn't get a response from them. Sally, I want to go back to your question about how this came to be. I'll try to summarize it quickly. Basically. It's in, it was in a transportation plan. There were negoti- a lot of negotiations and I think they were very tough ones with Wilsonville, the county and Twalton. And there was an agreement over a decade ago and they, you know, I've never understood why day road could be used because that would just. Keep all the industrial traffic in the industrial area, but that's not what was in their plan. Also, the Salt Creek on the Twelton side was originally gonna all be industrial and now it's gonna be housing. And there's gonna be low income housing. So I have additional concerns on top of the traffic. But there, in the county's mind, from what I've heard, is that this isn't a plan and that's how it's gonna be. And there was a lot of work put into it, which I understand, but I don't agree with that. I feel if you have new information, you should. Look at that and make the best decisions, but that's not what's happening. We will, the three of us, I know, will continue to fight. The noise thing's huge. The gun club and this and the removal of trees. It does. Cause that. I will say. What Counselor Brooks said, we're working on a climate action plan. There's also legislation coming down for, what's it called, Frank, climate friendly. In its action from the state that we're gonna have to enact. And that's. There is a lot of language in there putting trees in. So I think that will really help and. Hopefully we try to keep ahead of these things and be proactive. So we're implementing these things in advance. So. I, I would commit to work towards pushing that. So we're. Moving forward with that. Counselor Brooks is the one that. Introduced the idea of a climate action plan went over two years ago and I've supported her. And a lot of the idea of that is, besides the other things, is so we can update our ordinances for trees and other things that will protect our climate. And my last thing I wanted to say about the. Oh gosh. About the pavement and the need for trees is that they have a cooling effect. And when you put pavement in. That causes the heat index to rise. So that's another great benefit if we could add more trees. That's it. Thanks.
All right. What I'd like to add about the, the purpose, I, we all know. The purpose of one twenty-fourth was to relieve traffic on Twalton Sherwood Road. So as Twalton Sherwood Road, as we're seeing right now, as more and more industrial manufacturing development is occurring. That those trucks would not go down Twalton Sherwood Road. They're supposed to go down one hundred twenty-fourth. As Kathy mentioned, right now they're going to Graham's Ferry to Day Road and then on the I five. The bridge is supposed to get the trucks off of Day Road because Day Road is a Wilsonville owned facility. And Wilsonville doesn't want the trucks on Day Road. Day Road is, if you've driven the lady, it's falling apart. And they don't want to have to put a lot of money into Day Road to handle those trucks. So what the county has come up with is the plan we've seen. That would take, you know, that go over the canyon, drop on to Boone's Ferry Road, which is a county facility. And then it continues south to I five. And that's where, you know, we all know that there's issues, Boone's Ferry Road. From Wilsonville heading north to the high school and beyond, almost pretty much up to the McDonald's. I've been very vocal with Commissioner Rogers and Chair Harrington about this next round of M step. Which is Major Streets Transportation Improvement Program. That is funded by development fees that are paid to the county for road projects throughout the county. And saying that in this next round of projects, which the call for projects opened up this summer. That, you know, lower Boone's Ferry down the areas, we're definitely gonna be submitting something for the county to fix it. Issue is, just as Counselor Brooks mentioned. Look how long it's taken to get this additional lane onto Walton Sherwood Road. It's fifteen years and they're just starting to move dirt. So I want to get on this early so we can get on a plan and get a project going to address the traffic issues on Boone's Ferry Road. And I told Roy Rogers straight out, there's no effing way I'm gonna, you know, you know, go with a bridge until you fix Boone's Ferry Road. It, it doesn't work. So I've been very clear with them. The one piece of leverage we may have is when they do go for federal funding, they always look for a letter of support from Twalton. Because that's, you know, the feds are looking for that. That might be a little piece of leverage right there. You know, you know, so we'll get to that. But I wanted recognition of time, but just know that the council, we hear you. And we're fighting the county just as, you know, or we're trying to work and partner with them and be forceful. That we're not gonna be walked over, we're not gonna be steamrolled. We're gonna hear, get our concerns addressed. And we'll just keep irritating them and keep asking questions you're asking. Participate always in any kind of public forums they have. And then yes, keep track and making sure their public comment is collected. We'll follow up with it. But. The, the Boone's Ferry, the Basalt Creek Canyon Bridge is far from being even one inch towards being completed. And we're gonna make sure that the impact of Twalton are minimal if it ever occurs, if it ever does occur. Again, it, every year, it's amazing how much this bridge is skyrocketing in price every year. And the county just does not have that money to build it. So I want to get to your other questions. So on the second set of questions about traffic studies. As far as I know, we don't, we don't generate traffic studies. We rely on traffic engineering firms for traffic studies. And it's always a pretty much a question that we have when we get a traffic study is. When were these, you know, when were these models built? What does it incorporate? The latest greatest one that everyone was well aware of was the anticipated traffic study for In-N-Out Burger. You know, over at the BI spot. As it stands right now, we all know that In-N-Out has bought the land. But there's no development application. There's nothing. They're just sitting on it. Because you know and I know the traffic study there is, is gonna be very interesting about having a VI, a In-N-Out Burger there. And so council had lots of questions about, you know, whose traffic study we're gonna believe? If, in the event that they got that far and what kind of data goes into it. So. I asked Commissioner Rogers and Chair Harrington, when we do get to the point of. You know, if we're gonna continue discussing the bridge, there's gotta be updated traffic studies. We can't rely on traffic studies from two thousand thirteen anymore. We gotta rely on traffic studies that are way more recent, ideally two thousand nineteen, right before Covid. Because that's, you know, pre-Covid, we had pretty decent, you know, not decent, pretty good traffic issue here in town. And we know it's decreased and we're going back to pre-Covid level. So yes, we need accurate traffic studies to reflect. The true traffic status that we have here in population and incorporates anticipated growth. I want to do get to transit solutions. The challenge we have here is remember sixty-fifth is technically is the borderline of Twalton and, I'm sorry, Washington County. That facility is. By the two counties, Washington County maintains the part pretty much in Twalton, but after that it's Clackamas County. And I'm not aware when Frog Pond gets developed in that area. Possibly transit would go there. That'd be more smart. It'll be TriMet because it's outside of their area. But as far as translutions, transit solutions on Southwest Boone's Ferry. I've always, I've been talking to the gentleman who's in charge of SMART. About serving the area because of TriMet's lack of transit options. And on Monday, we had the Washington County Coordinating Committee had a discussion about the tolling. And. In order to deal with the tolling, there has to be other options, which is transit. And I straight out said, you know, TriMet, we've got lousy service in Twalton. I need reliable transit. North, south, east, west, that's twenty-four seven, Monday through Friday. I mean, Monday through, you know, seven days a week. Their comeback to me was that they're currently going to, through a. A reevaluate, a reevaluation of their routes and scheduling. So then they're taking public feedbacks to go to TriMet's website. And put your feedback in there, but I know that's, that's, that's not gonna be enough. So as we are, as this autumn sunrise and seep is happening. I anticipate more discussions with TriMet because we're gonna need to have. You know, the ninety-six not just run during business hours, we're gonna have to have options there. We'll talk to the Riot Connection Shuttle about getting more service down there. And my dream would be have SMART take it over. That SMART would serve Southern Twalton and TriMet would just move north. Of course, TriMet's gonna want something for that because they don't want to lose payroll dollars like, you know, that, but that's something we're gonna get to. But yeah, I totally agree. You know, Southern Twalton, you know, six, that whole area that's gonna develop, there's gotta be transit options. And it, and there has to be east-west transit options if tolling is to occur in a few years. Other counselors on that topic? Counselor Brooks?
I really appreciate your thoughtfulness and the question as well. We know, and I remember when I was running with the mayor. Publicly, I remember him saying, TriMet in our city sucks. And he was quoting the paper saying that. And we know. That just the stories that I've heard from people trying to get services at Horizon, the. The commuter migration that we have east to west, that problem for people to come here. And it is part of the housing strategy that we do have. Somebody put a question in about housing strategy there. We have a housing strategy. We do need to up, like I said, my. Position is that I would like to see us update our codes. And I, I know I'm not the only counselor that feels this way. And. You know, ideally, we. I, I agree with the mayor. I think that shorter buses. That are more frequent and that get people where they need to go around the city. That get people to where they need to go to the VA, to Oregon City where our workers come from and up and down. Boone's Ferry, but also in a way that doesn't congest the traffic. So that's the other thing. Are they gonna invest in pullouts or are we gonna have smaller vehicles? And how can this system actually be. Work for a city like our city? Because we're not a grid system like downtown. And we're much more developed than rural areas. So we have to be. We're in that kind of a spot. Traffic. I'm glad the mayor brought up. Tolling. All these problems would be exacerbated. Counselor Pratt has also been going to the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee. Which the mayor goes to here for transportation concerns. And. The whole council has been pushing back hard against tolling. We've written letters, we've given comment, we've shown leadership on this. And. I don't know if we'll get it to go our way. But. We're unified in, in that, and the reason is because what everybody knows here, that the spill off. Is going to be incredibly difficult for our community. To absorb, not only just in sheer concentration of traffic, but also. And congestion, but also how toxic that is. So you're right. We need solutions and. I would also invite, like, it's, I think it's just so great to have everybody here because these are the concerns that we. Fight for during city council meetings. And so if you see things that are of interest on our agenda. And want to make public comment, I know it can be daunting, but we really want to hear it and it really helps us. To get public comments so that we can better advocate. Better encourage people in the community to help us by also writing letters and giving comments. So we're, we're not feeling like Lone Rangers. I know we're not, but I just think it's just, you know, really great. I love all of the comments that everyone's made. I know most of us, if not all of us, feel the same way and. And so. However, we can work together. I'm, I'm very happy to do and really grateful for all the work and the ideas and the energy that you guys have brought today. Thanks.
All right. Question I have, so I'm not clear. Kathy, we mentioned the reclaimed area in Basalt Creek. Where are you talking about? You talk about the. Edges of one twenty-fourth that are still kind of like scabby lands and not really. Landscaped, if you will. Are you talking over near tiger sand and gravel? Where are you talking about? You're muted, Kathy.
There's so many jokes about you're muted, Kathy. Megan, can you pull up the slide that has the Basalt Creek? That you're on it. There it is. Okay. All right, I should have taken a photo of it, but if you drive along one hundred and twenty-fourth. This is where the mining operation has gone and they've, they've dumped dirt in. They're required to. Eventually restore it to its original appearance. I have heard the contract out on that is like twenty-five years. Is that correct?
Yeah, they, remember that's gonna eventually become, that's our southwest concept area?
Yes.
That when Tiger Sand and Gravel basically runs out of stuff to mine. They fill it all up and then they go and sell it to some developer. And the last time I actually talked about this was with Aquila. And Aquila said, yeah, it's about twenty years out still.
Right. We have, the CIO has had some success working with property owners. To get them on our side. There is probably five or six agencies that are governing that mining operation. Minimum. But right now, it, it, I, I'm not, a moonscape is being very kind. It's very odd what they're doing. I'm wondering if we could start a conversation with them. To see if the, some of our sound issues could be resolved for very little money. They got a lot of dirt out there. They're gonna want it packed in. In order to develop it, they're gonna have to. Well, that it was gonna take compaction of some sort. So maybe trees would be a good thing if it's a twenty year growth cycle.
I think it's worth a conversation.
It's a conversation.
Yeah, I agree. Yep. Because I wrote that in my notes. I thought it was, because you know, the sides of one twenty-fourth aren't the most beautiful things in the world. You're looking over all the boulders and stuff and. I got a note here to follow up with Washington County. Is there any way they can plant stuff? Around on the sides of the roadway that, you know, again, would replace some of the barriers that were used to be there. Knowing that, you know, one twenty-fourth's there to stay and they, if they put up some. You know, maybe not hundred foot fir trees or something tall that could, you know, block the, the sound, that'd be a good thing.
One of the things I recall is that when land research went in. They put that berm alongside the road and planted a lot of trees.
Yes.
And it was partially a noise issue for construction. It, I don't think it was in our code. I think they just agreed to it because the neighborhoods were concerned about sound. So something like that might be an option. They obviously have bulldozers. So.
Because they have, the city does have residential buffers. So for example, you know, Twalton Road. A development there requires sound buffering and building of berms and. Our providers and stuff like that, similar to what Nike has done. So any, I mean, and we talked about that. Way back when, down in the Basalt Creek area where before. Way back when down in the Basalt Creek area where before the change to residential where Autumn Sunrise is gonna be. How we were gonna, you know, block the sound of that future industrial area from Norwood Road. And that's the same, the same discussion came up. So it could be the same thing, yeah.
Privacy hedges, something. Something green, not concrete. I raised my hand because I wanna to thank all of you for your comments. I know I have learned a lot. I'm assuming the other CIO leaders have learned a lot. We've, what we're hoping is that when you look at the county. That the condition of that bridge needs to be tied to their original concept. The original concept was Norwood, which was a connection across the freeway. Somehow they've persuaded you. In their negotiation that building a bridge to nowhere. Is a solution. The real solution is to have the connector into Clackamas County. If they're worried about Day Road, that's your leverage. That's the county's leverage right there. Although I would rather never see the bridge built, but if it is built, it ought to have a connector. Otherwise, it makes no sense at all. And I'm hopeful that the city council will take that position.
Yeah, so I'm talking, because I gotta find about that Clackamas County side, because the land that. The bridge that would go over would still land in Washington County.
Yeah, for about two hundred.
Until sixty-fifth and then then we get to the, you know, the little border there.
I don't think Wash- Washington County would fight you from those two hundred feet.
Yeah. And then I wanted to also talk about, where's, I'm looking here, the, oh. For Patricia and crew at the gun club. So I emailed Patricia, I sent a letter to the Washington County Commissioners. Quite honestly, was quite surprised to get an answer back in the day. From Chair Harrington, who was very open to ideas right now.
He's running for reelection, isn't she?
Of course, yeah, yes, as is Commissioner Treese. You know, two, two people who are usually are very interested in public health. But Commissioner Rogers did reach out to me and he wants to chat about the gun range also. So we were supposed to talk yesterday, but he had an evening meeting that also popped up. So I just wanna let you know that he is, you know. I have a feeling, you know, he's got a long history. We all know Commissioner Rogers has been there for quite a while. You know, get the history from him and, you know, as when I'm participating with Patricia's group. That will pass, and I'm gonna pass on the concerns, the ideas and. But, you know, at least the commissioners didn't shut us down. In the past, I've gotten shut down about the gun club. This time we were not. So it's a step, it's a baby step in the right direction.
I so appreciate hearing that, Mayor, and for all your work and the council's work in this. And I know that, you know, it's, it's not just. An issue that is isolated to one home or one block. It's the entire community that hears this noise pollution. I know Counsel Brooks, you can hear it at your home, inside your home now. And as, as we continue to lay more concrete. We continue to have more problems. So this is a step in the right direction and I am prayerful that. As a community, we can find a solution.
I just wanted to ask the CIO people, has anybody got any questions for the city council? This is a good time to ask.
Can I also just say one thing real quick to respond to Patricia, Mayor? The other piece, some of you might know, I introduced. Thing about becoming a certified B city, which we are now, we have been for three years. And part of that plan is about habitat loss and habit, protecting habitat. So that, I, I personally want. That initiative, the Tree City. Initiative, the Climate Action Plan, those things to work together when we're thinking about updating. Our codes. So that, that's where my mind is at. And, and also when I first came on council, people were talking about, we were in the, in the. The housing planning conversation and. People were really wanting our city to be a destination. We know about the heritage trails and different ideas for tourism. And we have these beautiful wetlands that are national, you know. We have a beautiful river that runs through that sometimes is hard to even find. And so. That kind of ecotourism, those kinds of conversations is also part of. A different strategic framework, I think, than maybe would have been in the, you know, what people were thinking about thirty years ago. So I just don't want you to feel that we don't think about that. I very much appreciate the noise pollution conversation and. And I know that I'm not the only counselor invested in. Making our city more green and more livable and healthier. And then I, I was wondering too, Mayor, about the other question in the chat around. The. Comprehensive development plan. What are your thoughts? Now you're on mute.
My turn, Kathy. Yeah, we're looking, the comprehensive plan needs to be updated. It's out of date and we're taking. Bits and pieces of it, updating it, and that's where the Climate Action Plan would tie into our comprehensive plan. Cause comprehensive plan is supposed to drive your development. Traditionally, in the past, you know, thirty years or so, Twalton's development has been guided by zoning more than a comprehensive plan. We have one, but comprehensive plans have morphed over the years. People talk about the one that's in Hillsborough, Wilsonville, stuff like that on how. Your plan drives development and it dribbles down that your standards are set by your comprehensive plan, not by zoning of neighborhoods. And that's a migration that we have to make. We're still in an older format of, you know, traditional development. I know, I see Ed shaking his head. This is when. A certain member of our community is very outspoken on this and Ed knows who I know I'm talking about. Was a former developer who was super frustrated where how behind we are in our development codes, comprehensive plans, but. Every time I see Joe, we talk about it and we're moving forward, but not as fast as he'd like. But Counsel Pratt, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I apologize. I, I have, my internet service Comcast kicked me out, so I missed the middle part of the meeting.
We assigned you a lot of projects to do.
I'm sure you did.
You're the point person on all of them.
That's fine, but I just wanted to thank everybody for caring about our community, for showing up tonight and the work you do. And I really hope to work with you more and I'd love to hear your ideas. I put in the chat, you know, council at Twalton and gov. That reaches all the mayor and all the council members. And we're glad to hear your ideas and concerns. It sounds like we share a lot of the same concerns, but we wanna hear what your thoughts are. We know you talk to other people in the community. So we really appreciate hearing from you. And also. We would love your help to advocate for our community with the county commissioners. So I put their. Location in the chat too. When you get on the website, it's a little unclear, but on the left it says commissioners. And if you click on that little button, you'll get to where you can contact them individually or as a group and. All this we can do to advocate. I think the mayor and I are particularly aware of the fact that Washington County gets ignored a lot of time. Or ignores our little end of the county, East Washington County. There's a lot of population in Hillsboro, Beaverton. So it's, it's always a struggle to get attention for things in our end of the county. So anything you could do to help advocate for us would be really appreciated.
And don't be shy about testifying at a Washington County Commission meeting. I know they've gone back in person, but the state does have a requirement. Even if you go back into in-person council meetings, commission meetings, there still has to be a virtual aspect. So, you know, they, they have citizen resident comment, just like we do. So, you know, take advantage of testifying in front of the county commissioners. You're back in the day was a hassle. You had to drive out to Hillsborough. But take advantage of the Zoom platform and the virtual platform that's available now to testify and stay in your house and instead of having to drive to Hillsborough. Any other comments, questions?
There's one other one in the chat about us still being a tree city. We are still a tree city. I know it's confusing sometimes and sometimes what'll happen. And I'm still learning about this too, because it's kinda complicated, but when the urban growth boundary extends. There'll be trees taken out of unincorporated Washington County. Before they come, the property comes into the city. And so we don't have control over that. So, but it also doesn't count against us for our status. But I, I. Think that doubling down on our investment. We, I saw in the notes that there was facts and figures that are, that were shown. About how many curb trees we put in and, and the efforts that we're making as a city to keep our. Tree City status, which we love, and Arbor Day is coming up. And. And, and that's another thing, if there's curb trees that are missing in your neighborhood. You should let us know or talk to the, your neighbors and. Because those should be replaced. And I know when I drive around, sometimes I see places where they've been taken out and they haven't been put back in. And even just on a walk, you can feel the difference in the heat. And how it does protect the community and the heat index. So those. I know that's not exactly what we're talking about with buffers, but I, I like the idea of natural buffers. But I just wanted to make sure that whoever had that concern, I forgot who it was in the chat. That we are still a tree city, so we have not lost that status and we work hard to maintain that status. So I just want you to be reassured that that's true, even though all the solutions that we have might not be perfect. And that giant warehouse is a big concerning thing. So I totally get the concern about that. And believe me, as a counselor, we're gonna keep talking about things like this.
So I'm not seeing any hands up, so. Is that, thinking that's a wrap, Kathy, what do you think?
Oh, it's a wrap.
Well, thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. Go ahead and. If you haven't had it yet, go get your corned beef cabbage, drink a Guinness, a shot of Jameson. That's what my wife and I are gonna do. We visited Ireland and we got in that habit of. A Guinness and a shot of Jameson. So happy Saint Patrick's and have a good evening. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Thank you, everybody.